Welcome, a call to orders, zoning board of appeals, town of Fairfield, November 4, 2021. The light COVID-19, in pursuit of the executive orders, our governor, that we're conducting this meeting via WebEx. Before I begin, I just want to announce on the record a few things. First, I want to congratulate Faith on being re-elected to the alternate, Faith Dillon, to be re-elected to the alternate position. I also want to congratulate Brian Avalone, being elected to a four-year position. It's great. Look forward to work, continue to work with Faith, and also since Brian came from an alter position, we're continuing to work with him. So that's awesome. And another announcement is I announced it off the record, but right now, we have several matters we are not going forward today. And three from our continued docket, which include number 10, 3280 and 3300 Post Road, and 599 Kings Highway West, as well as 1517 Beaconview Drive. Those are not going forward today on our continued docket, and they will be going forward, or maybe going forward on our December hearing. And on our regular docket, number nine, which is 160 Cedar Road, that is not going forward today. That'll be going forward possibly during our December hearing. So we have our working executive session right now, two matters on the agenda. The first is approval of our minutes from October. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all the board members, to make this a little easy, you can raise your hand so I could see it, or say aye, all in favor?
Aye.
I see all hands raised and an aye. I'm in favor as well, that carries unanimously. The second item is approval of our secretary's fees. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Seconds.
Jane, be, Terry, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Again, let's vote, all in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
I see all hands raised except Katie's. There it is, okay. That's unanimous. That passes. We'll reconvene our working session after our public hearing. At that time, we'll be voting on any application which goes forward today.
Good.
Was there a question?
Did you say Jane again?
Yeah.
I'm missing my sheet. I've done this enough, you don't think I'd need a sheet, but now I'll call to orders, zoning board of appeals, public hearing, November 4, 2021, town of Fairfield. Well, initially, when I call a matter, what I'm going to be doing is I'm going to be presenting and calling the matter as it appears on our agenda. It's very important that the record is clear, so only I should be talking at that time. After I make that particular call, put on the record of what you're seeking, then the applicant or his or her agent can be present the case. At that time, make sure you, the applicant, you give your name and address, so we have it for the record. In fact, anyone who does speak, it is helpful for when you begin to speak, to give your name and address. Anyone that wants to make comments, I request they give their name and address. And if you don't, I may interrupt you, or at some point during your discussion, I will make sure that the record reflects what your name and address is. It's it's a little bit more difficult when we're doing this by WebEx, because we want to make sure everyone knows who's speaking, so it's best if you do it at the beginning, especially for people that are listening in, and not necessarily watching it, where the little Hollywood square lights up when you're talking. So please help us when you're speaking to, you know, make sure you state your name. After the applicant's presentation, I will then open up the floor to anyone who has a comment, whether you're in favor or against it. At that time, please just let us know your name, and whether you have a comment in favor of it, or against that particular application. And I will take them in order. I take them in this order. I take those in favor right after the applicant, and then I take those who are opposed, after all comments in favor of the application. If there are any opposition comments, I will allow the applicant, or whoever presented on behalf of the applicant, to address those comments in a rebuttal format. At that time, it is not a time for the applicant, or his or her agent, to restate your whole claim or a request. It is your time to address the comments that opposed your application. So just make sure you keep your comments to the point. The meeting's being taped and recorded, and it's so we can create a record. So only one person should be speaking at a time. Anyone who does speak, as I indicated, please introduce yourself by giving your name and address. We welcome the comments of anyone who's interested, whether you're in favor or against it. However, as chairman, I reserve my right to restrict your comments at any time if you are too far off the point. Remember, this is zoning board of appeals, and all of these are requests for variances of our zoning regulations, so the focus should be on the variance and the question of whether there's a hardship for that particular property, and nothing else. So please keep your points and comments on those points. As I indicated earlier, after the public hearing has been fully closed, and all matters have gone forward that wish to go forward today, it will then maybe take a short break if needed, but we will then reconvene our working executive session. At that time, I welcome anyone who wants to, is to stay on, because we will keep it open, just like we do when we're in person. We allow you to stay in the room, so you can hear our comments, because what will happen is that each application that goes forward will be taken up in order, and we will have a discussion about that. So the board members and the commission members will be talking about your application, their thoughts about it, their comments, and some people will say why they think it should be granted, some will say why they don't think it should be granted. So I think it's very helpful for the people that are interested, particularly the applicant, but anyone who's interested in it, even if you're opposed, to find out what our thoughts are, and why the board is doing what it eventually did. It'll give you some good education as to why we decided a particular way. If you can't stay, don't worry. You don't get any penalties for not staying. You can call the zoning office tomorrow to find out what happened. If an application for a waiver is granted, it will not be valid until it's recorded on our land records. So that, you know, if that happens, if it is granted, you will need to bring or send a check made out to the town of Fairfield in the amount of $60, and bring and send it to the town of Fairfield's zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting. Any waiver which involves construction, whether it's for a new dwelling, an addition, or an alteration, will require an as-built prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. So now we're going to begin our public hearing. Our first item on our agenda is on our continued docket, and this is number 12, which is 645 Fairfield Beach Road, map 184, parcel eight, petition of Voltino Beach Properties LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 11.12, to reduce the setback from Long Island Sound from 157.2 feet, proposing 127.3 feet. Permission to construct a three-tiered deck premises BD zone. And Attorney Rizio, I believe you're presenting this?
Yes, Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
And if I could ask Matt just to also let Chris Russo available to show some of our exhibits. He's also on the on the, on the call today. So Chairman, my name is Raymond Rizio. I'm happy to be for the commission representing Voltino Beach House LLC, which in its principles Frank and Mary Ann Chambriello, who hoped to be able to, they purchased this property maybe over a year or two ago, and would like to renovate the beachside property so that they can move it and make it his primary occupancy. Occupants. This has always been, historically been a rental, rental property, but they've fallen in love with Fairfield Beach, and would like to make the front house their home. So this is a very unique piece of property. 645 Fairfield Beach Road is like, you know, it's funny when you start talking about proving a hardship and something unique about a property, everything about this property is unique, and everything about it gives rise to making it show, making, for the showing of an unusual hardship. The property is currently, it's got 43 feet of frontage on Fairfield Beach Road, and about 48 feet of frontage on Long Island Sound. It's got 350, over 350 feet of depth, so it is a very unusual piece of property. Additionally, there are three older non-conforming homes that are on the property. What our client would like to do is put, remove a non-conforming deck, a non-conforming patio, and non-conforming stairs, and replace it with two decks. I think it might still read that there were three decks, if that's what the call reads, we have reduced it to two decks based on the fact that there was some community opposition with regard to the three decks. So we would like to put three decks, two decks on the property. And they're basically, as I said, a wood deck and a stone patio on the property along with stairs which will be removed. So currently, there is a concrete, there's current deck is about 115 feet from Long Island Sound. There is also a patio that is about 135 feet from Long Island Sound. We would remove both of those as a condition of approval, and we would move these decks back against the home, so that now would be, the deck would be 157 feet from Long Island Sound. And the stairs would be 127 feet from Long Island Sound. As you can see, the stairs are on the lower portion of the site plan, and the deck, which is about 12 feet wide, is on the upper version. In doing this, we'll also reduce the non-conforming, the non-conforming coverage. Currently, we have 21, our coverage is 21.3%. We'll be reducing our coverage down to 20.3%. Permitted coverage in this zone is 20, 20%, so as you can see, not only reducing the non-conformity, we're basically bringing it as close to conforming as possible, which is very unique in the beach zone, as you know. So in looking at this, let me take a look at, we plan on, Chris, if you can bring up the elevations. Okay, so we're going to basically put two nice open-air decks, one off the first floor, one off the second floor. We're going to take the, we believe, I'll show you, has greatly improved the look of the home, and certainly make it more manageable level, and also, more importantly, consistent with all the other homes that go along Fairfield Beach, Fairfield Beach. As you can see, we'll show you pictures. Basically, everybody to the west of us has two decks, and they're actually closer to Long Island Sound, and most of the homes to the east of us, going toward Penfield Pavilion, also have multiple decks. And this house is probably the furthest from Long Island Sound. The regulation we're seeking to gain relief from is section 11.12. Chris, if you can pull up the section, I just want to take the commission, so that they see this and understand how, in relation to this property, that strict enforcement of this regulations uniquely affects this property in a much different case than others. Our setbacks from Long Island Sound shall not be closer to the front wall of the building existing as of the date of the adoption from Long Island Sound. And, and as you see, we're 100, and over 170, almost 170 feet from Long Island Sound our building is. And all we would like to do is basically come out 12 feet, so that we're 157 feet from Long Island Sound. Where it really highlights how unfair this property is treated in relation to the regulations, is this, if this were a vacant lot, and we tore down the houses, it could be no closer to the water line of Long Island Sound than a line drawn between the two closest corners of the closest houses on either side, and I have an exhibit to show you that we would, we'd still be able to put the decks there, including porches, but not open decks on the ground floor, except that in no case shall a setback be less than 25 feet. We're going to be 157 feet. You folks know, as you've been dealing with Fairfield Beach zoning variances for years, because of the non-conforming status of a lot of these properties, this is probably the deepest, I can tell you, in the 25 years I've been doing the work before this commission, I think it's the deepest request I've ever had for a variance to permit a structure in between the building and Long Island Sound, at 157 feet for the, for the deck, and 127 feet, 127 feet from the stairs. This clearly is a unique property. Chris, if you can show us the, show us the, what the line would look like between the two corners. So if we were to tear the house down and replace it, or drastically rebuild it, if you take the two corners, I'm not suggesting that we'd have to tear down the house to avoid a variance, but in effect, if you look, there's more than 12 feet from the corner. That's between the two corner of the homes, and we, our, our decks and stairs would fit within that, within, within that, within that line, which means we would not need a variance. So but for the fact that it's pre-existing non-conforming, but for the fact, the lot is 350 to 360 feet deep, and probably one of the largest variances that's ever been requested with regard to a structure between Long Island Sound and, and the, the, the part of the building facing Long Island Sound. Now, in in seeking a variance, we need to prove a few things. We have to show you that it's, it's inheritance to the zoning ordinance must show cause unusual hardship unnecessary to carry out the general purpose of the zoning plan, which means we have to show that it's consistent with the master plan. Well, we all know, this is in a residential zone, it's a residence, decks are permitted. It's clearly not going to change the use of the property, not change it from a single-family residence, and no other variance, you know, are being sought. So this is clearly not, it's clearly consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's an attractive addition, it cleans up the front of the property, and I'll show you in the pictures. Second, we have to show that this hardship originates and arises directly out of the application ordinance to unique circumstances pertaining to the lot in question. Some peculiar characteristics of the property, for example, the shape of the property, the depth of the property, the non, previously non-conforming existence of the, conditions of the property. In this instance, the properties, I don't know of a property that's 360 feet by 43 feet deep. I don't know of another property that would need a variance, because it's 157 feet from Long Island Sound. It's seeking to get two decks, consistent with almost every other, other property that's up and along this area of Fairfield Beach Road. The last thing we need to prove is that one of the goals is for the elimination or the reduction in non-conformities. In granting this variance, you will not only reduce our non-conformity as the amount of the area of a structure between, of the structure between those Long Island Sound and the, and the, the area from Long Island Sound to the building, as our current deck is only 115 feet from Long Island Sound, but you'll also be reducing a second non-conformity, which we don't need a variance for, which in that, we're reducing the coverage by 1% and getting it almost to a completely conforming in coverage. So when we go through and look at applications, and you look at classic hardship, I stand before you very clear, easily tonight, or sit before you easily tonight on a call, and say very clearly that this is an application that is built out of classic hardship. We're moving the decks and the, and the coverage back over, in some instances, 30, almost 42 feet with regard to the decks, with regard to the stairs over 12 feet, and we're removing an additional patio that happens to be in the way, and additional staircases that were on the northern side that were close to a neighbor. All those reasons, we respectfully request this commission grant this application, because I, I, I mean, I'll be open to questions. I don't understand an application that could have more hardship. In fact, before we do that, let me just, Chris, because maybe a lot of the commissioners haven't walked to the other side, let's just take the commission through a quick, a quick tour of the property, so that the commission can see what we're dealing with. So that's, our property is the, one of the middle ones, it's the sec, it's next to the, to the left of the property. Chris has a little, has the arrow on top of it, sitting back, way back from the other properties, and up again, up, and, and basically, the front of our property sits behind the back of the, of the property that's in front of us. So as you can see, a tremendous distance from Long Island Sound. Chris, if you can take the next picture. As you can note, the pictures, the properties on either, on both, on, to the left of us both have two decks. And closer to the water by about 50 feet. This is a good view of what you see down this area of Fairfield Beach Road, multiple homes, multiple decks, all basically closer to this Long Island Sound than our, than our property. And keep in mind, we, we are removing a deck that's non-conforming and closer to the property. Once again, another picture as we go down, and you see the decks that are closer to Long Island Sound, multiple decks, some two, and even three decks on some homes. Keep going, Chris. And this is fairly recent. So we're not asking for anything out of the, out of the regular. Chris, if you can take us back to our property, so that we can show commission, how, also how we believe that if you look at the elevations, will not only improve the look of the property and, and and greatly enhance, we believe, the neighborhood. We have a very flat, no architectural detail to the property at all. I think you gotta go back, Chris. There we go. As you can see, that's, that's our property there. Nothing, just, just some windows, very flat, no architectural detail to the property. We believe that we can improve it. Our client would love to live there, but I mean, you're basically, it's probably one of the only homes that would be prohibited from having a deck. I don't know of another home that's been prohibited of having a deck on Fairfield Beach Road, and then on top of that, being 157 feet from a Long Island Sound. These decks will be open-air, so they won't impair anybody's view. And for all those reasons, we respect, respectfully request this commission grant the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know you got folks know what the decks look like, you know how deep this property is. I'm not really sure what else, but I can answer. I hope, I hope we gave you a good tour and showed you how denying this would, I think, really be a hardship.
Thank you, Attorney Russo, Rizio, Russo, Russo for putting it up, and Rizio for talking.
And Sometimes you'd rather have it the other way around, sure.
Well, then we would never see anything, I assume. But Attorney Rizio, we have a couple of letters, and I think there's some people that are in a comment in opposition to this, so I'll let you address the letters that were submitted to the board and the comments together. So at this time, the board, have any questions for Attorney Rizio? I have shaking of the head, no. So there's no questions. Okay. I'd like to open this up now to anyone that wishes to speak to this application, whether you're in favor or against it. Please just let me know by giving me your name, and whether you are in favor or against it.
Greg Burton, I'm with Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy in New Haven. I represent Mary Beth Mata, Mary Beth and Robert Mata. They are the owners of 681 Fairfield Beach Road. We submitted a letter. If it pleases the commission, I'd be happy to read that letter into the record.
Let me just see. Thank you, Attorney Burton. Let me see if there's anyone else that wishes to comment. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment, whether you're in favor or against the application? All right, Attorney Burton, it's your pleasure. You can, you can read that in, you can highlight it. It is part of our record already. So I leave it to you as to what, it was authored by, the one that we have is authored by Robert and Mary Beth.
That's correct. As, as, as you may, may have, have guessed, the legal citation is my hand in the drafting of that letter. So I would like to read it to the commission, because I think it's important for the commission to hear the, the applicable information.
Okay, that's, that's fine, Attorney Burton.
So as, as owners of one of the closest and most immediately impacted homes where my clients reside, we strongly object to the granting of the requested variance for modifications for the reasons that I'll explain. This application fails to meet the standard for illegal hardship. The Connecticut Supreme Court stated very clearly that in order to establish a hardship with the granting of a variance, under the Connecticut general statute, it's an applicant must show not only that they're thwarted in a desired use of the land, and this is critical, but also that the person is completely or almost completely deprived of the use or the value of the land. That's from the Chevron Oil case, Connecticut Supreme Court, 1976. Certainly, the mere inability to construct a larger deck on the applicant's property does not result in the applicant being almost completely deprived of the use or value of its land. On the contrary, this property is fully usable as a residential dwelling in its current state. Connecticut Supreme Court has also said that a variance is properly granted only where there is a showing before the zoning board of appeals, that the hardship caused by the application of the zoning regulations relates to the property for which the variance is sought, and not to the personal hardship of the owners thereof, from the Garibaldi case, Garibaldi versus Zoning Board of Appeals, 1972. The applicant's property has an existing deck and patio that allows enjoyment of the beachfront. Certainly understandable that the applicant may desire to have a second-story deck. However, the applicant has identified no physical aspects of the property that necessitates a two-story deck. The dimensions, the attorney Rizzo spoke about previously, relate to the lateral dimensions, but he says nothing about the need for a vertical expansion of this non-conforming use. Since variances may only be granted where a physical aspect of the property necessitates the variance, this application fails to state a legally sufficient hardship and should be denied. The next point that I want to speak to is the fact that this application is actually an increase and an intensification of the existing non-conformity. The applicant had attempts to claim here that it is reducing an existing non-conformity. While the reduction of an existing non-conformity is a valid basis for a variance, in doing so, the requested variance cannot increase or intensify the non-conformity. The applicant has an existing non-conforming deck that is closer to Long Island Sound than permitted. The applicant has claimed that it constitutes a hardship that it's not allowed to reduce that non-conformity of its existing deck by constructing a proposed replacement deck. However, the replacement deck is not located within the footprint of the existing non-conforming structure. The proposed deck is in a new location that extends beyond the permitted rear yard setbacks, and it actually increases the width of that existing rear yard setback encroachment. So whereas the current deck is, yes, encroaching further, but it doesn't encroach the entire width of the property, whereas the replacement deck actually increases the width of that encroachment on Long Island Sound. It also increases the overall floor area. So Attorney Rizzo indicated that the, that the footprint of the deck is being reduced, and while that may be true, the proposed deck is actually increasing the overall area due to its vertical expansion of the encroachment. So the applicant has proposed to construct a two-story deck and an attached pergola that increases and intensifies the non-conformity vertically. In stating that the deck reduces the rear setback, the rear setback encroachment, the applicant is stating only the reduction in depth and is conveniently ignoring the other dimensions in which this non-conformity is actually being increased and intensified. The Connecticut Supreme Court has stated that non, quote, "non-conforming uses should be abolished or reduced to conformity as quickly as the fair interest of the parties will permit," and I emphasize this, the court continues, "in no case should they be allowed to increase." That's from the Adolphson versus Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Fairfield in 1988. See also, related to that, is the ENF case more recently, ENF Associates versus the Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Fairfield in 2015. In that case, the court held that a variance permitting a vertical expansion of a non-conforming building failed to meet the legal standards for the issuance of a variance. It's a very similar situation to the situation we have before us today. The Supreme Court has also stated that, quote, "a non-conforming structure cannot be increased in size in violation of zoning ordinances, i.e., non-conforming additions may not be made to the non-conforming structure." That's from Bauer versus Waste Management in 1995. Since this application would increase and intensify the non-conformity, despite a nominal reduction in one dimension of its non-conformity, the application fails to meet the legal requirements for a variance to reduce non-conformity, and must be denied. The last point that I'd like to speak to The last point that I'd like to speak to is that the applicant has indicated that this proposed deck is consistent with decks on other properties in the neighborhood. The applicant apparently believes that the existence of the nonconformities on other properties or the granting of past variances for those properties should be a basis for granting this application. The Connecticut appellate court has held that prior variances are not a basis to grant a present variance application. The court stated that, quote, "Each case must be decided on its own merits." And it follows that, quote, "A variance may not be justified on the ground that other variances had previously been issued in the immediate area," close quote, from Haynes versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Oxford in nineteen ninety one. Accordingly, this application must stand on its own, and the existence of other nonconformities on other properties in this area or even variances granted to nearby properties is not a basis or a justification for the granting of a variance in this case. For the foregoing reasons, we respectfully request that the Zoning Board of Appeals deny this application. And we note to the board that it's our intention to file an appeal should a variance be granted despite our objection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Burton. Uh, let me just see, are there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? Whether you're in favor or against the application, just in case someone didn't hear before. All right, um, Attorney Rizio, um, you can, uh, comment.
Yeah.
None of the points raised by Attorney Burton, please.
Well, I certainly don't disagree, don't agree with it, and I frankly think it's kind of hypocritical um, of the Mattas to be taking an appeal considering they have two decks and are closer to the water than our client um, and are not inconformity. First of all, let me explain the reasons why we're doing this also. We have a noncompliant, non FEMA compliant deck that sits out only a hundred and fifteen feet from the water. We, it can go, it gets filled with water, it gets filled with sand, it's basically made nonusable and non FEMA compliant. The deck we are proposing will be FEMA compliant and more conforming to the regulations than the than the um, than the current deck. Um, the current deck, it, our our deck, our new deck will be about a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and thirty five feet. Um, yes, what, no, it's a hundred and forty two feet because the house is a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty seven feet from the property, the deck is twelve feet wide. The new deck, the bounds of the new deck will be a hundred and um, a hundred and forty five feet from the water. Um, the stairs will be a hundred and twenty seven feet from the water. The current deck is only a hundred and fifteen feet from the water and a patio that is a hundred and thirty five feet from water, both non FEMA compliant. So not only are reducing nonconformities, it is the it is the goal of your plan of conservation development. It is the goal of your master plan to bring beach properties more into conformity and certainly to make them more FEMA compliant. We are accomplishing those tasks. We're reducing the nonconformity by one percent. Also, he cites the law, but I think he cites parts of the law and choose to ignore the unique application, the this, the the issues before us. We talked about, this property does stand on its own. We mentioned the other two family debt, the other two decks on all the other homes because one of the things improving a improving a hardship is that you have to prove consistency with with properties in the surrounding neighborhood. I don't know whether they whether they got variances or not, or they were all preexisting nonconforming. All I know is almost every other deck, including the Mattis home, which I'll show you a house, a picture of, is closer to the closer to the water and has two decks. So we're just saying in general, we're not going to do anything that will affect the comprehensive plan. That is very clear and what and it's discussed in, uh, Egan, the Zone of Board of Appeals versus O'Line. It's discussed in Grillo versus Zoning Board of Appeals of City of West Haven. It's also discussed in Adolphson versus the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Fairfield, all dealing with something that has to be consistent with the master plan as a prerequisite to show uh, that that it's hardship, but not inconsistent with the master plan, and we're showing that. Also, we talk about, we have to originate it arises directly out of the application of this ordinance to unique circumstances pertaining to the lot in question. That's Archambault versus Wadlow, and it has to have some peculiar characteristics uh, of the property, which we believe we have, which is which is also zoning zone Dolan versus Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Fairfield. So what what's so unique about this? It's forty five feet, forty three feet by three hundred and sixty feet deep. The property is, as you, as we talked about, if it were vacant, it has to be between the two corners of the adjoining homes. Are we, we showed you that we can fit our deck between the two corners of the adjoining homes. It has to, the the it says basically that if it were vacant piece of property, you could go up to as far as twenty five feet from the water. We're going to be a hundred and forty five feet from the water, and we're going to be eliminating nonconformities, both a patio and a deck, which are which also can be considered dangerous since they're non FEMA compliant. So we will be we'll be reducing nonconformities and creating a FEMA compliant por- portion of our home, which we feel is very important. We also talk about, as Mr. Burton talks in the law, is that the elimination reduction nonconformities, this is very clear in the Hyatt versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Norwalk. The elimination reduction nonconformities is is integral and important and also a reason for granting variances. I find this all to be very troubling. I find this all to be, it's okay for me, it's not okay for you. Um, let's take a look at the Mattis home, show how this has no, absolutely no effect on their property. We have no problem with the repealing. We believe we've satisfied all of the legal zoning requirement, illegal aspects with regard to a variance. We'll defend the appeal till it's fullest. I don't believe the Mattis can show that there is any effect in the granting of this variance on this pro- on their property. So Chris, let's just show their the Mattis home and then show overhead to see that they won't even be able to see the deck. So this is the Mattis home, very nice home, nicely well done with two decks, one on the first floor and a standing deck on the second floor. Looks familiar, looks familiar like every other property in town. Now let's see how if we grant this, how if the granting this application will have any possible impact on the Mattis. And take a look from the overhead view. So the Mattas are at six eighty one, Chris, if you can point the Mattis house out. Chris, you put the, okay, the Mattas are at six eighty one, right there. If can, I don't know if everybody can see that. And then, Chris, if you can point out where our property is, where our client's property is. The Mattas would have to look through three houses around the corner, or I don't know, maybe they'll fly a drone over to see if these decks could have possibly have any impact on their property. No impact on their property, no effect on the property. I don't know, Mr. Burton's clients, I know certainly Mr. Burton wouldn't be taking a spiteful appeal, but if there's something personal that's driven by this appeal, but it's clearly not because the granting of two decks and the reduction of nonconformities would have a negative effect on the Mattis home. Chris, maybe come up a little closer to show the difference between six eighty one. You could probably also find the distance, it's probably a couple hundred feet away. So I I I don't understand the impact at all on the Mattas. I do understand what is what what would be consistent with what's been approved in this area, with what's been built in this area. I do understand that we would be able to build this tech if we tore down the house. I do understand that in the event a flood came through and wiped away our deck, that we would not be able to rebuild our current deck and then would be left with no decks, which is completely unfair. I don't know of another house across along Fairfield Beach Road that is not permitted to have any deck on the home. I I don't get it, and it's very troubling that 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 there that people are even opposing this when the people that most people that are opposing it have two decks and are closer to the water. I think I've given you all the legal ammunition you need to grant this variance. I think it is consistent with the master plan. It's to a unique property. It reduces nonconformities. It does everything that is set forth in the goals of the ZBA to look at when they do grant a variance. And it has no negative impact on any neighbors, as I can just show you by the GIS map that we just showed you. For all those reasons, respectfully request you grant this application. I'd be happy to answer any 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 questions of the of the commission. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yeah, no, I was muted, I had muted. Any questions on the rebuttal? Sorry. All right, none. We're going to close the hearing now on six forty
My, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were, uh, closing a hearing. Yeah, just a, just a quite, I'm sorry, Attorney Rizio, I'm sorry, and this is just a clarification question because I understand that typically you only allow the person to speak and then rebuttal, and so I I understand that. Um, and so my my only question is is just if if you're willing to allow my client to speak with respect to the views to answer that question.
No.
I understand, and I defer to the procedure.
I, uh, I opened it up as purposely, Attorney Burton, um, after you spoke. Uh, and um, that I have this, we don't go back and forth, we'd be here forever. So.
Understood, thank you for the point of order.
All right. I'm going to close the hearing on six forty five Fairfield Beach Road. Thank you, Attorney Burton, thank you, Attorney Rizio. Next item, uh, number ten, three thirty two eighty thirty three hundred, uh, Post Road. That's been continued to December. Continued docket number eleven, five ninety nine Kings Highway West, that's been continued to December. Next item for business, uh, that we do have is continued docket number three. That's eight thirty, uh, Beach Road, map one three eight parcel one parcel four six, petition of Sofia Leonida for a variance of the zoning regulation section five point two point five to increase the lot coverage from twenty percent, currently twenty three point seven percent, proposing twenty four point five percent. Permission to legitimize a construction error premises A zone and, uh, Attorney Fallon, you're presenting this?
I am, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. For the record, John Fallon, I'm an attorney here in Fairfield. I'm pleased to be, uh, representing Dr. Sofia Leonida. Uh, Dr. Leonida is a long practicing and much loved pediatrician here in Fairfield. She's also lived in the house in question for over twenty years. By way of background, in June of two thousand and seventeen, I represented, uh, Dr. Leonida before the board, uh, and they granted a variance, uh, section five point two point five to allow an increase in lot coverage to twenty three point seven percent in order to construct an unenclosed deck at her property. As I explained at the time, the the doctor's home had been severely damaged by Hurricane, uh, Superstorm Sandy, and that required a substantial reconstruction that included elevating the structure to ensure FEMA compliance. As a result, the ingress and egress, uh, to the property, uh, became exceedingly difficult with, uh, extremely step, uh, sharp, uh, step and stairs, uh, to that location. We also confirmed in two thousand and seventeen that unfortunately, Dr. Leonida had been diagnosed with a severe cervical spine spondyliosis, which resulted as a practical matter in her being unable to utilize in any safe way those extremely, um, steep steps. So we asked for the approval by the board of this deck uh, so that there would be an opportunity for her to enjoy the outside, to enjoy some, uh, aspects of her her property without having to navigate those stairs. The board was good enough to grant the variance finding hardship based upon, one, the location and characteristics of the existing structure, and two, the fact that compliance with FEMA regulations implicated the use and enjoyment of the property, uh, by Dr. Leonida. In accordance with the approval that you granted in two thousand and seventeen, the deck was constructed. Unfortunately, an ASBIL survey, uh, which we have obviously submitted as part of this application, confirmed that due to a contractor's error, uh, the coverage on the property is actually twenty four point five percent or point eight percent greater than the coverage variance approved in two thousand and seventeen at twenty three point seven percent. Thus, we are making this application in order to ask for your approval to legitimize this coverage resulting from the contractor's error. From a legal perspective, I think the application satisfies the standards of the statute under section eight dash six A three. Uh, you need to make two findings, uh, that the request does not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan and that there is unusual hardship, uh, that is sufficient to to form a basis for the granting of the variance. With regard to the first aspect of the test, uh, obviously, as was the case with the original application in two thousand and seventeen, uh, there will not be any effect on the comprehensive zoning plan. Uh, the deck is a permitted use in the zone, and in fact, certainly this minor discrepancy of point eight percent uh, will not have any impact relative to the comprehensive plan. The structure will remain substantially as you approved it in two thousand and seventeen, and, uh, that will be the use of no, there'll be no change in the use of the deck as you approved it. We did, uh, go to our neighbors about this unfortunate error. I've submitted petitions. Uh, Dr. Leonida went far and wide relative to her neighborhood, and the petitions, uh, of non-opposition speak for themselves. With regard to the hardship requirement, I would submit respectfully that those elements of hardship that you found sufficient for the granting of the variance in two thousand and seventeen are still applicable with regard to this matter. I've already discussed those. I think they're still pertinent. As a legal matter, however, there's also case law that I cite, which is pertinent here, and that is that our Connecticut courts have recognized that there is legal authority that provides an honest error made by a contractor does establish a proper basis of a finding of hardship with regard to the granting of a variance associated with, uh, an effort to legitimize that error, and that's the circumstance here. The contractor, uh, who we, uh, you know, understand, but the fact of the matter is it's a small overbuild of point eight percent. But that contractor's error based upon the Osborne versus Zoning Board of Appeals, the Griswold case and other cases I cite give you another additional and proper basis to make a finding here of hardship sufficient to support the granting of the variance. So, uh, we would hope that, uh, we appreciate the 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 board's consideration in two thousand and seventeen. The deck, which is now constructed, has allowed the Sofia to have some enjoyment of the outside of her house without having to risk, uh, as her condition has not improved, uh, the the rather steep stairs. And we would hope that you would find the, uh, the circumstances such that granting of this application to legitimize what hopefully you will perceive as a minor contractor's error in the coverage uh, can be approved so that she can, uh, get a CO for that deck. And we'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have and appreciate your continued cooperation and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Board, have any questions? No question? All right, is there anyone that wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this matter? Please let me know by giving me your name. All right, no one seeking to speak. Uh, so we're all set on this one, going to be closing the hearing. Thank you very much, Attorney Fallon. Hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Our next item, I believe this is also with you, Attorney Fallon, it's eighty eight Dwight Street, map one eight two parcels seven three. Petition of Victor Nessie for a variance of zoning regulation section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback from thirty feet to the house, currently thirty point four feet to the house, proposing twenty six point five feet to the house, section five point two point five to increase the total lot coverage and total floor area from twenty percent and forty percent, currently twenty two point five percent and twenty one point three percent, proposing twenty two point three percent and forty two point nine percent. Permission to construct a one-story and second floor with attic additions and front and rear porches with stairs premises A zone. Go ahead, Attorney Fallon.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm John Fallon, I'm an attorney here in Fairfield. I represent the owner of the property, Victor Nessie. Property is located at eighty eight Dwight Street. Uh, it is located in the residence A zone, and it is a preexisting nonconforming lot with respectable lot area and shape. The lot comprises seven thousand six hundred and fifty three square feet, wherein, as you know, in the zone, the minimum lot area contemplated is nine thousand three hundred and seventy five square feet. Similarly, similarly, the square is sixty three, uh, feet, and that is less than the minimum lot square requirement of seventy five, uh, feet. Uh, what we seek is your approval to construct, as the call indicates, an addition over the existing first floor as shown on the plans we've submitted. Uh, as my architect, our architect Phil Saron, who will join us momentarily, will point out, we also are proposing a small, uh, a landing that will provide a small vestibule a small, a landing that will provide a small vestibule area in order to accommodate that new construction, as the call indicates, we do seek a variance of section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback to accommodate that landing, and also a variance of section five point two point five to increase the total floor area by two point nine percent over what is the, the allowed in the zone, and similarly, the coverage by two point three percent, twenty-two point three percent. I would point out, as I'll discuss further, however, that the actual existing coverage of twenty-two point five percent is therefore being reduced to twenty-two point three percent. So there will, as a result of this application, be a reduction in coverage. Before I discuss the legal underpinnings of the application, I'd like to have our architect, Philip Saron, just give you a brief overview of the architectural aspects of the addition. Phil?
Good afternoon. My name is Philip Saron, my office is here in Fairfield, Connecticut. You guys have the drawings, we can, I can bring them up if you want me to, but I'm just going to give you kind of a quick overview is that basically, it's an existing cape, we're taking the second floor, the cape off, we're building a new second floor with some attic space above it, and a little portico on the front of the house, and one of the things we're also doing is that we're bringing the house into FEMA conformance, so we'll be filling in the existing basement that's there. So, everything that we build, once we get done, we'll make this house into conformance with FEMA. The, the little bit of additional footprint we're building is just that front entry porch, portico, just to make the entrance a little bit better to get into the house. We conform with, with our height regulations, and as I said, we're just, we're not expanding the footprint at all, so I'd be happy to show you the drawings if you need me to, or answer any questions.
Thanks, Phil. If anybody has any questions, Mr. Saron is here, he'll stay here for the course of the hearing. But I'll, I'll just continue in terms of the legal aspects. I would point out that, as I do in my material, that the landing not only, I think, has a positive aesthetic impact with regard to the property and the streetscape, if you will, but it's also going to, by accommodating that small vestibule area, enhance energy efficiency with regard to the dwelling. The variances that we, we request with regard to F A R coverage, they do arise directly from the fact that this plot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, being one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two square feet less in lot area than the current minimum lot area contemplated in the zone. I'd also point out, the, the inclusion of the half-story as proposed is very important to, to the applicant, as it will supply a small, separate, habitable workspace that will allow for a private area to be utilized for working at home. I don't have to tell this board, because you've seen it month after month, but the entire concept of homework areas has become more pronounced as our society adopts to COVID required changes. And this small area will, in fact, afford an opportunity for that type of a small functional area. It goes without saying that the proposed addition will conform with all other requirements of the zone, height, etc. And as I pointed out, and will emphasize in the legal aspects, we are reducing coverage from twenty-two point five to twenty-two point three percent. So what does this all mean in terms of the statute? As you all, ladies and gentlemen, know well, under eight dash six A three, you make, you need to make two findings. One, that the variance will not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and, two, that there are factors with regard to the property that do establish legal hardship as our case law recognizes it for purposes of granting the variance. With regard to the first aspect of the test, I cite in my material the Egan case, which is well-known to you. In that case, the appellate court said that if the use to be allowed by the variance is consistent with other uses in the area and/or is a permitted use in the zone, then that first part of the test is satisfied. In this case, obviously, the granting of the variance is not going to change the use of the property, it will remain a single-family home as explicitly permitted in the zone. As I said, other than the variances that we seek, we will, in fact, be complying with all other provisions of the regulations. The proposed addition, as Mr. Saron has designed it, is attractive, it harmonizes with the character in the neighborhood, and, and I think will make a very positive aesthetic enhancement to the property benefiting the entire area. In that regard, I did submit through Mr. Decker a petition that the applicant did submit, taking it through the neighborhood to show them the, the plans, and we're pleased with the neighborhood support for our proposal. I think that is indicative of the fact that, as I said, not only will this be a, a very nice functional improvement for the applicant, but in fact, it will have a nice and a very positive impact on the overall aesthetics of the, of the house and, and therefore benefit the neighborhood. With regard to the hardship, the primary issue here, obviously, and the controlling fact, as I think the board would be aware, is that the lot is, in fact, a valid and legally protected non-conforming lot as it relates to lot area. The President's Zone, as I've said, requires nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five, we are substantially less than that at seven thousand six hundred and fifty-three. Because Connecticut General Statute A test two says that such lots are legally protected, that is what gives rise to the hardship issue here, because the twenty percent coverage requirement and the forty percent F A R requirement presently applicable in the zone have to be calculated based upon a lot that is over seventeen hundred square feet, although legally protected, smaller and less inside than the current minimum requirement. Does the Supreme Court, in the cases I cite, Scobie and Kelly and Dolan, all analyze that situation. And what they find is that where a property is a valid and non-conforming lot with regard to lot area, that provides sufficient hardship for the granting of variances with regard to total floor area and coverage because the application of those regulations do affect the, the pre-existing non-conforming legally protected status in a negative way. So I think that the case law is very clear, and has been recognized by this board over the years very well, that hardship is required for the granting of a variance, and a variance for coverage or F A R is supported by hardship when you have a significantly non-conforming lot with regard to lot area. And as I said, the, 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 the request for the floor area variance is, is not overwhelmingly significant, it's two point nine percent. The applicant took good care of working with Mr. Saron, not to come in here with something that would be way out of whack, even considering the, the non-conforming status of the lot. Similarly, as I've said probably too many times, the actual coverage here is being reduced to twenty-two point three percent. And that gives reference to the Hyatt case, which I cited page four of my material, where our Connecticut Supreme Court found that since the goal of zoning is the reduction of non-conformities, therefore, when an application for a variance involves a proposal that will reduce an existing non-conformity, this provides a proper, additional, and independent legal basis for the granting of the variance. And that is the case here as to the coverage, non-conformity reduction. So, in summary and subject to answer any questions that you might have that I or Mr. Saron can answer. The proposal here is for an addition that is attractive in design, harmonizes with the character of the neighborhood, is going to have a significant architectural enhancement benefiting the surrounding neighborhood. We believe legal hardship is established based upon the analysis that I referenced pertaining to the provisions of the standards of eight dash six, and due to the fact that the lot is a legally protected, pre-existing, non-conforming lot. The other thing I would point out that Mr. Saron did that is relevant to that legal standard is FEMA compliance. We are bringing this property into FEMA compliance, and the board has recognized previously in the case law would support a finding that, too, is a proper basis for a, a granting of a variance in question, as is, again, the Hyatt case and the authority that it represents about reductions in non-conformities. So, we would be pleased to answer any questions you might have, we think this is a, a good application, we think the applicant has been careful in working with Mr. Saron to come here with something that is reasonable considering the non-conformity of the lot, and we hope you will agree that it is going to have a positive benefit, not only for the owner of the property, but also for the neighborhood aesthetically. We'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Does the board have any questions for Attorney Fallon or Mrs. Saron? Jane, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Fallon, you said that the F A R increased that extra two point four percent, is that where it is?
Two point, it's actually two point nine percent.
Is because you need to create a office at the attic level, and you cite that as a hardship?
Well, I think that the hardship arises from, from the property and from the fact that the property is significantly non-conforming as the lot area. I did point out in my remarks that the inclusion of that small area is something that is desired because of the ability to provide a homework area. That, however, is window dressing to the legal argument. The legal argument is, it's context, not window dressing. But the legal argument is still based on the fact here that, you know, we have a non-conforming lot, the non-conformity is significant. And this applicant, though, is not trying to take advantage of the non-conformity by coming in here and seeking a F A R variance that well exceeds what would be reasonable considering the non-conformity. This is a carefully designed approach. It just so happens that part of what is part of that F A R, a small part of it, is in fact, that small home office work area that we think is consistent with not only the applicant's, our applicant's needs, but current trends.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, it's not the legal argument. No, it's not the legal argument, it's the legal argument here is based on the non-conformity of the lot.
Okay, thank you, that's it for me.
Any other questions? Okay, no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this application, eighty-eight Dwight Street, either in favor or against the application? Okay, hearing no one speak up, we're going to close the hearing on eighty-eight Dwight Street. Thank you, Attorney Fallon, thank you, Mrs. Saron, for your comments as well.
And thank you all, ladies and gentlemen, very much.
Next item that we have is number nine on the continued docket fifteen seventeen Beacon View Drive, that has been continued to December. Our first matter on the general docket is number one, two sixty-seven South Pine Creek Road, map two three one parcel three five petition of Karen Jaber for variance of zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback on a corner lot from seventeen feet, currently five point five feet proposing twelve feet, and section five point two point five to increase lot coverage and total floor area from thirty percent and fifty percent, currently twenty-one point eight percent and eighteen point six percent proposing thirty point four percent and fifty-four point five percent permission to construct a FEMA compliant two and a half story, single-family dwelling premises B zone. Jane, I believe you're here.
I am, yes. Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. My name is Karen Jaber of two sixty-seven South Pine Creek Road, and my partner Scott and I, along with our five children, are seeking a larger home for our family. We purchased this property in July of two thousand and twenty-one, which is at the corner of South Pine Creek Road and Rugby Road in the Residence B Zone. We plan to build a two and a half story, single-family FEMA compliant home to replace the non-conforming home currently there, which is located in the A E flood zone. We're seeking a variance of section five point two point four of the zoning regulations to allow a reduction of the sum of the two side street line setbacks from seventeen feet, presently five and a half feet to eleven point eight feet, as well as a variance of section five point two five to increase the maximum lot coverage and total floor area allowed by thirty and fifty percent to thirty point four and fifty-four point five percent. The hardships that, that we have are that this is a corner lot. It is non-conforming in shape, it's long and narrow and oddly shaped. It's also non-conforming in size, typically Zone B lot area should be six thousand square feet, and this is five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine square feet, so over four hundred square feet smaller. Another hardship is the setback, mainly most of the side street setbacks range from seven to ten feet, the rugby road setback and the corner lot create an unnecessary right-of-way hardship. And I'd like to just say that, you know, you don't know what you don't know, and what we didn't know was the street setbacks. And initially, we did want to try to take the home that was there and expand it. The, the home there is over a hundred years old, so the, the, the foundation has issues. And in addition, the basement is at the, is five feet above the flood elevation, so it was, it was just a lot to work with and too costly to try to make that work, which is why we are proposing to construct this new home. We think that what we're looking at constructing is reasonably sized, it would be a FEMA compliant home on this undersized and oddly shaped property. We think it's fully proportionate and, and a vast improvement over what's there today. And given the, given the ratios that I mentioned, the floor area ratio as well as the, the lot size, if it was a conforming size lot, those would be in line with, with a six thousand square foot lot with respect to the lot coverage and the total floor area. So I, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jaber. The board have any questions for Ms. Jaber? Yes, Jane, go ahead.
Hi, you were, you presented last month as well?
I did, yeah.
Can you just remind me, what was the F A R you had?
It was over fifty, it was around fifty-eight percent, and we did go back and we sliced off square footage from the back as well as the sides of the home. And tried to sharpen our pencils.
I appreciate that.
Just for the record, it was fifty-eight percent and the lot coverage was thirty-one point six percent from the old, from the application from last, last month.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, now I'm going to open this up to comment, is there anyone that wishes to comment on this application, it's two sixty-seven South Pine Creek Road, whether you're in favor or opposed to it, please provide me with your name and what you plan to speak about in favor or opposed. Okay, no comments, I'm going to close the hearing on two sixty-seven South Pine Creek Road. Thank you very much, Ms. Jaber.
Thank you.
Our next item that we have is number two, sixty Chapel Hill Drive, map seven parcel one nine five. Petition of Diana Pon Klein for a variance of zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the sideline setback from ten feet, currently nine point six feet proposing nine point six feet. Permission to construct a second floor addition premises R two zone. And I think the applicant, the owner is presenting this, is that right?
That's right. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board, my name is Diana Pon Klein of sixty Chapel Hill Drive. I am requesting a permission, permission to construct a second floor addition and seeking a variance of the zoning regulations to reduce the sideline setback from ten feet, currently nine point six, proposing nine point six. My hardship is we have a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot where the existing dwelling already sits inside the requited sideline setback. I've submitted petition signatures from my neighbors. Please let me know if you have any questions, I may be able to answer at this time. Thank you for, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klein, and is there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, which is sixty Chapel Hill Drive? Let me know, give me your name. Okay, no one spoke up to comment, I'm going to close the hearing now on sixty Chapel Hill Drive, thank you, Diana Pon Klein for presenting.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Our next item is number three, ninety-five Buena Vista Road, map two eight parcel one six zero. Petition of Justin M. and Sarah P. Hardy for a variance of the. Petition of Justin M. and Sarah P. Hardy for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five point two point five to increase the lot coverage from twenty percent, proposing twenty-three point one three percent. Permission to legitimize a construction error premises A zone.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Veronica. I'm your name of Sarah and Justin Hardy.
Okay, you're going to need to speak up a little bit, turn up volume or something, because you're coming in very faint, Ms. Sisum.
Is it better?
Yes, just try to talk loud, pretend like you're across the room from the microphone, please.
All right, can you hear me? Yes? I think that I can hear you, but as long as you can hear me, that's fine.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. I will just put share my screen to show exactly what we're looking for. The first thing we would like to say, sorry. So during the pandemic and the freezing market, client wasn't able to move to another house. And also they did have knowledge and comprehension about the process, regarding the process. About the process, okay?
Hold up, Ms. Sisum, you're breaking up for me. I don't know if anyone else has that problem as well?
I apologize.
Just make sure you talk loud. I'm going to go on mute again, just to make sure that's not causing any. Go ahead.
Okay, now it's better? Okay, so whatever you're looking for, we are requesting to increase the lot coverage from twenty percent to twenty-three four point thirteen percent and legalize the construction. What about the hardship? So as you have the survey, you could see here in the table with standard that the minimum lot area is nine point three and we have five point nine. Okay? The only point that we are have nonconform is here as well. So the the setback should be thirty and we have twenty-eight point eight and thirty-one point nine. And also the lot coverage that should be twenty percent and we are requesting twenty-three four point thirteen. Okay, this is one hardship. And another one, I know that you don't consider a personal hardship however. The family is growing, was growing. They need more living area and they are trying to improve the neighborhood as well. So what about the process, what they did? This is the before, the photos before, as you can see. So they build to the here of the house in the same footprint. So they did this first addition right here. They so actually they add a bedroom right here. The first floor they keep as it is. They didn't touch there only here, in the second floor. So also they did the side addition right here. As you can see. Above the existing bedroom, so they use the same footprint and the same roof line right here. And they added a new bathroom with an open concept so you can access from the bedroom, the existing bedroom. Okay, and it was above the existing bedroom. So that's all. If you have any questions? That's it.
Okay, well, let's take down the screen. All right, thank you. Does the board have any question for Ms. Sisum? Yes, Jane, go ahead.
Hi, did the applicants obtain a building permit to do this work?
I'm I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Did the applicants obtain a building permit to complete this work?
No, they started a permit two thousand plans. But then they get the zoning permits. But as they didn't know how to move forward, they didn't get the building permits.
That did not get a building permit?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just the just a point of clarification. Did you say they got a zoning approval and then did not obtain a building approval? Is that correct?
Yes, they started the process in two thousand and twenty. However, with the COVID and everything, the city hall was closed. I believe the math was helping him with the process over this topic and just built it.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's open this up. Is there is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or against the application? Okay, hearing no comments. We're going to close the hearing on ninety-five Buena Vista Road. Thank you, Ms. Sisum, for the presentation. We'll be taking this up later.
I appreciate, thank you.
Our next item that we have is eleven forty-three Sasko Hill Road. It's map two three nine parcel seven petition of eleven forty-three Sasko Hill Road, Lot Two for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five point two point four point three to reduce the rear setback for an accessory for accessory structures from fifty feet and ten feet, currently eighteen feet and four point two feet, proposing eighteen feet and four point two feet. Permission to allow two accessory structures to remain in their existing locations premises AAA zone. And who is presenting this? Is it Attorney Rizzio? Go ahead.
Yes, it is, Chairman. Chairman, my name is Raymond Rizzio. My office at ten Sasko Hill Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm so happy to be before you representing eleven forty-three Sasko Hill Road LLC with regard to this property at eleven forty-three Sasko Hill. This property, this application is unusual because we're not building anything. We're not changing anything. We're not looking to do anything except legalize a generator and a filtration filtration equipment and a garage, which have been in existence, the garage certainly since the nineteen fifties. As and and would and given the fact that the property has been subdivided, there is a change in lot line. So what used to be our rear, our sideline is now a rear yard. If I can ask Chris to just bring up our site plan, the the overall subdivision plan, so we can show the commission. If you remember, this is the old Jack property. It's at the end of Sasko Hill Road. It was about twenty-two acres. Our client purchased this property, so the the nonconformities were were preexisting. The property had 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 become a little rundown. In fact, the garage, we didn't think could be saved. And we had, we got the approval of the P and Z to split the property into seven building lots. This, the existing house, which our client is a beautiful old home, is is just really well done, brick home, and it has a garage that matches. Our client is, as you can see, moved the road a little bit. It's a private road and that that so that it was conforming, there were no setback violation. This allowed him to preserve the house. However, what happened is, once we may cut, obtained the subdivision approval, Lot One now became the property with the frontage on Sasko Hill Road. And our frontage now on Lot Two becomes on the proposed on the new private road. What does that mean? That means it turns our 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 structure in the rear, as you can see, Chris, if you could point up to the top. Our frontage is now on the front, on the private road, and the garage and the generator and filtration system now but a rear lot instead of a instead of a side yard line. So now what happens is, we have to now abide by a greater a greater setback. So the setback's now been is been increased from fifty feet for an accessory structure. It was currently and and ten feet for the generator. Now we're going to be going, nothing's going to change. It's going to remain, the garage is going to remain eighteen feet from the property line. And the other, and it's got, I'm sorry, four point, they both remain four point two. Chris, let me, let me tell, let's zero in on this, if we can just go on the lot. So as you can see, what you see is the existing garage, which you can see is eighteen feet from the property line instead of fifty. And then you have the the pads, which are the for a generator and a filtration system that serves the main house, which were all basically undercover. We had to cut away brush to even find the, basically see the garage. And it's a beautiful garage, I'll show you pictures of that. That's four point two feet. If I can, Chris, take us to the overhead. Eleven thirty-one Sasko Hill Road is owned by someone named Josh Samuelson. We've spoken to him, he has no opposition to this application. Across the street is owned by Robert Rosani. Across the street, I mean, on the other side of Sasko, backing up to the country club's ninth hole, is a man named Robert Rosani, who also approves the application. And what you can see here is the garages. Mr. Samuelson, which is at eleven thirty-one Sasko Hill Road, just to the right of that red line. His pro, his garages are all built on the property line. If you look to the left of the left of the red line, you'll see our garage and see the generator and the filtration system. Both these things are well screened. They've been there for years. Everybody who who, Mr. Samuelson has no objection to it, because when he bought his house, this thing has been there. The garage has been there since the fifties. It has no negative impact on any of the properties. Chris, let's just go to quickly go to the go to the pictures. Try and get out everybody's way, we've got a long agenda. So the garage, beautiful garage, it's brick to match the house with a slate roof. And our client thought it was very important to keep that. So Chris, just a real, we'll do a real quick show. That is the garage now that it's all been cleaned up. That previously had vines growing it. We've we've cut back all the trees, trees hanging over it. As you can see, it's a very tastefully done garage and we'd like to keep that. Keep going, Chris. And like I said, we're not, the slate roof is going to be repaired and cleaned up. It's a beautiful slate roof. I I don't, I can imagine what it would cost to replace this type of roof today. It's a all original slate. Next picture. Inside of the garage. Keep going, Chris, you can see it's brick, way overbuilt. As you can see, it's also well screened from our neighbor, our neighbor. No one will see this. No one even knew it existed. That's the property from the side, garage from the side. And all we're, as I said, is asking to be able to keep the garage in its place. As you can see, it goes great with the existing house. I don't know if any of you have ever been up there, but it's a magnificent home with a magnificent piece of property. Okay? So in in granting a variance, you have to find out, is this consistent with the master plan? Is it is it violate the general plan, comprehensive plan? It clearly doesn't. Garages are permitted, generators are permitted. Is it unique? What's unique about this, that the only thing driving this variance is the fact that the lot line changed. The building's in the exact same place it's been for fifty years. The maybe seventy years, because it was built in the fifties. And the generator and the filtration system are in the same location. They've been for at least fifteen years. We believe that but for the change in the lot line, it is what drove this drove this variance. So there's no practical impact on any joining properties. There's no negative impact on any joining properties. There's no one that will ever see it or even know that this is subject to a variance. But for the technical requirement is that our side yard changed to a rear yard. For all those reasons, we believe that a hardship exists because it's very unique. It's also because of the change in setbacks from side to rear. And we believe that both are worth preserving and saving. And we have the approval of our neighbor, our our neighbors. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Rizzio. Are there any questions? Jane, yes, go ahead.
So I'm I'm confused. If if we're, if we decide not to grant this variance, does that mean you have to take these buildings down?
Take it down, yeah, or move it.
And who's going to enforce that?
Well, we would, we in, we would have to remove it before we could record our subdivision map.
I see.
So we'd have to, we have to be in compliance to be able to record our subdivision map. When we're going through the subdivision process, keep in mind, we got this approval before our client owned the property. So we got the subdivision approved. We couldn't get access to the garage, it was so covered, we didn't know the condition of the garage. There was discussion of whether to take down the house and take down the garage. Our client is going to go through a full restoration on the house, which is incredible. And then also wanted to preserve the garage because it matched with the house and didn't change. We thought it was, we thought it was very important to keep the garage. We had no idea what the condition of it was. The property, if you've ever been down the road for the last five years, had just fallen into disrepair. And 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 we think, we think these these assets are worth preserving. Our neighbor thinks it's worth preserving and we, and and like I said, it's but for the change of the lot line that we now, without any change of circum, any change to the physicality of what we're asking about, because of the change in lot line, we shift from a side yard to a rear yard, but no impact on any other property.
I understand, I'm just, I just don't understand the process, like, isn't this just automatically existing nonconforming situation?
Oh, because we have to, before, we haven't recorded our subdivision map yet. So before, for us to effectuate the subdivision, we've either got to get a variance or take down the garage.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
And we we clearly believe it's worth preserving. I hope the commission does also.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Attorney Rizzio?
Um, just a a quick one, I'm not even sure if it's our purview, but are these still functioning mechanical? Is this still a functioning mechanical building?
Yeah, the 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 filtration system is what keep, is what filters the whole water for the main house. The generator services both the main house and the garage. And the garage, as you can see, would be fully functional. Once it's cleaned up, new garage doors on and the inside all cleaned up. It hadn't been touched in a long time.
And for the purpose of my education with this, should we approve this? This would still only be eligible as a as an outbuilding, correct?
No, it's an accessory structure, correct.
Rooms or anything like that.
No, it's an accessory structure.
All right, any other questions? All right. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this application? It's eleven forty-three Sasko Hill Road, either in favor or against it? All right, hearing no one commenting or wishing to comment. We're going to close the hearing on eleven forty-three Sasko Hill Road. Thank you very much, Attorney Rizzio. Do you, do you have the next one, Attorney Rizzio?
I I do.
Okay, all right, number five, two forty-six Churchill, map two eight parcel five three six. Petition of Shonza Ishan for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five point two point four point three to reduce the street line and rear line setbacks from thirty feet and ten feet, proposing eighteen point eight feet and four feet. Permission to legitimize and the relocation of an existing one car, one story garage premises A zone. Go ahead, sir.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzio. Office of ten Sasko Hill Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. I think it's my day for crazy, crazy looking properties that are very unique. This property at two forty-six Churchill Road is an L-shaped lot that has a garage that prior to the garage, the exist, the new, the the shifting of the garage could only be accessed by driving across a lawn. Chris, let's, let's start with the the map and then we'll take up through a picture to give the commission an idea. So this is an L-shaped lot, fronting on Churchill Road and the side of it being on Fairfield Woods Road. It's very unique because there's about twenty-three feet of property between the driveway where our lot line starts to where the curb begins in the paved area of Churchill Road. And that gave rise to a lot of the reasons we're end up here tonight. So as you can see, our, this is where the garage, we have the garage, existing garage is right up front. Our client would like to move the garage further back to basically be four feet from the rear, the rear yard. There was no way to put a garage on this property that would be conforming. The property, you would need a thirty feet front and a thirty feet rear setback and the this part of the property is only about fifty feet. So, Chris, if we can go to a picture to give the commission a view of what the property looked like before the garage shifted. We're going to, trying to legalize what's been done. The property looked like before the garage shifted. We're going to, trying to legalize what's been done. So our client purchased this house. The house was kind of needed a ton of work. And this is the house. So the garage, as you could see. Faced, um. Fairfield Woods Road. The front is Churchill Road. And the only way to access that garage is to either drive across the grass on Fairfield Woods Road, or it looked like where that tree is. To drive that entire length across the. Across the grass and into the garage. Chris, another picture, I think you have that showed from the front, I think. As you can see, it's up against the property line. This property, this had a slab on it and it was all, it was, it's been there forever. What our client did was he. Changed the direction of the garage. He swung the garage. Knowing that it was thirty feet, he thought he was thirty feet off the street and there wasn't a problem. However, what he didn't take into account was he doesn't own the first twenty-three feet off the street. It was brought to his attention that there was a problem. We immediately made an application for a variance. The intention now is to take that garage, it's the exact same garage you saw in the first picture that just been painted and cleaned up. Pick up the garage, move it back on the slab. So it's four feet from the rear. And creates a regular parking spot off the town's property. And it's the same garage that has just been turned catty queen. It's just been turned on its side. So instead of. The side of the property, the side of the garage running along the neighbor's property, you will not, and it twenty-two feet long, you will now have basically a. Twelve, twelve foot wide garage. There's the garage as it existed. As you can see, it made absolutely no sense. And my client thought he had a huge front, a huge front yard. When he didn't realize that the first twenty-three feet of it belonged to the town when he swung the garage around. Hence the issue arose. So go back to the site plan, Chris. We go back to the site plan. Our proposal is to move the prop, move the garage back to where the, the old slab ended, which was four feet from the, four feet from the, uh, neighboring property. Keep the property in the direction so that he could drive in off of Churchill Road. There's plenty of sight line. There's plenty of sight distance. There's no issues. In fact, it, it, they probably stopped using the property off, the, the garage off hazards. It, it had to be hazardous trying to turn in. Off of Fairfield Woods Road, traverse all the grass into the garage. Or come off Churchill Road and pull basically a U, a U-turn to get in the garage sideways across the, across the lawn. Or inadvertently, our client didn't realize that he was, that he was violating the setback regulations. For those reasons, we're here before you for a variance. As you can see, it's a uniquely shaped lot. As you can see, there's really nowhere. Else to put the garage, a, a garage or keep a garage on the lot. That the change in swinging the same garage. From, let's call it to, to going in the direction of east-west from north-south is a huge improvement from both a safety factor. A look factor. And everything else. Um, it just made no sense to have the garage point the other way. The garage also was not deep enough that you couldn't drive into it from Churchill Road by just switching the garage doors because the garage was only about twelve to fourteen feet deep. And a garage would not fit in the, it's, a car would not fit inside the garage. Um. Clearly, this variance is a result of the shape of the lot. Uh, we don't believe there's any negative impact. Our client has gone to a bunch of their neighbors who have signed a petition in favor of this. As you can see, it's a huge improvement that will only be improved when it's pushed back the eight. Additional feet to give, to give a, a larger setback, which will be about eighteen feet. So the existing garage is going to get pushed back about eight to ten feet. All this, we're all, and, and in all these discussions, we're talking about the same garage. So there's no new garage to be built. There's no new garage that got moved. It's the same garage that. Pointed in the last direction you would ever point a garage to now correcting it, moving it back. So that you could properly fit at least one car in front of the garage off the town's property. I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know it's, it's kind of very unique. But when you look at it, it all makes sense. And especially if you look at the pictures of the way the garage originally sat. And then understanding my client's mistake. Being a layperson thinking that he owned to the curb, to the street and not, and not knowing that that twenty-three feet. From. His property line to the curb belonged to the town.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Rizio. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, I see Jane and Brian. Jane, go ahead.
Um, what is the square footage of the garage or what are the dimensions?
It's, uh, I think I want to say two hundred and seventy feet.
So it's over. The size. That.
Um. The exact same garage.
Yeah, but. I think it's two hundred square feet or less. You don't need a building permit, but you have to comply zoning, but this is over that size.
Correct. He's going to go through the permit process and everything else. He didn't build, remember, keep in mind, he didn't build any.
No, I know. I'm just trying to get a, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, it's, it's roughly twelve by twenty-five, something like that. It just gets you to about two seventy.
Thank you. That's it.
Brian?
I was just trying to understand, is this effectively in use a shed? Or is he actually parking a vehicle?
No, it's, it's, it's a garage. It's a full garage. If you, Chris, let's go back to the two pictures. Show the.
Not necessary. When you're, in your description, you said you couldn't fit a vehicle.
If you, if we shift, if we kept the garage, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Avalon, what I, what I meant. What I was trying to show, Chris, if you can just go back to the picture where the garage was orig, where it was originally. If we were to put a garage door where those windows were. So that we could access it from Churchill Road. It's not wide enough to fit a garage in coming in from Churchill Road. So if you keep the garage inward, the only way to get to the garage, into the garage. Is from Fairfield Woods Road. That's the only. Unless he's, unless you swing it, you, you, you'd have to drive across the grass either on Churchill.
Unless you flip it a hundred and eighty degrees and require him to take a left into the garage instead of. Going that way. I get it.
Okay. So I, 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 I hope I didn't confuse you. I apologize if I did.
Okay, any other questions? I can't see other hands. Uh, Chris, Attorney Russo, can you take? Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this application? It's two forty-six Churchill. Uh, either in favor or against?
Chairman, I don't know if the Chris, if the Chris has submitted for the record. I apologize for interrupting. We had a petition that was, I wasn't sure if it was in the record yet, Chris, if it was, if it isn't, would you please? Show it on the, show it on the screen and then email it to, email it to Matt.
We have, yeah, it was, uh, submitted.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Chair. I mean.
Two forty-six Churchill. Yeah, we have the petitions.
Thank you.
Uh. No problem. Uh, uh. Just to make sure, anyone in favor or against this, please let me know. All right, no one wishing to make comment. I'm going to close the hearing on two forty-six Churchill. Thank you, Attorney Rizio.
Thank you.
Our next item is number six. Uh. Three zero one Palomar Drive. Map seven four, parcel one four nine, petition of Frank and Lisa Cavalia for variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four. To reduce the sideline setbacks from fifteen feet, currently seven point five feet, proposing thirteen point. Two feet on each side and section five point two point five to increase lot coverage from fifteen percent. Currently eleven point four five percent, proposing seventeen point six five percent permission to construct. Uh, a new two-story, single-family dwelling premises, R three zone, and Faith, you're sitting, uh, for Katie on this. All right. And. Who's presenting, uh, this one?
Uh, I am. My name is, uh, Richard Cornetek.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm representing, uh, Frank and Lisa Cavalier. Uh, so three oh one Palomar is located in an R three zone. Which requires twenty thousand square feet of space. Uh, but back in nineteen fifty-four, fifty-five, when they were, you know, doing construction on this street. Uh, they made these all non-conforming R three lots. So they are, they don't meet the square footage. Uh, this lot happens to be thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square feet. Um. Which creates my, my first hardship of the total building coverage. If I had had my twenty thousand square feet. I wouldn't, I wouldn't need the variance. Uh, the second hardship is the setbacks because the lot is only seventy-five feet wide as opposed to the normal hundred and three, hundred and ten feet wide lot. Uh, I wouldn't, wouldn't have a, an issue with, with the setbacks. Uh, the existing building, uh, that's on the property now is forty-nine feet wide. And that's exactly what I'm looking to do, uh, but I want to center the new building. So it would make it thirteen point two or thirteen, yeah, thirteen point two feet on each side. Right now it's more pushed to the right-hand side and where it only meets, it's like a seven point three foot setback. Um. So we're looking to just center the, center the building on the property. Uh, it also says that it's a two-story building. It's really a story and a half building. Uh, the reason where we, we are so big on the coverage is the first floor is rather large. Um. One of the homeowners has a, a health issue that requires him, you know, them to be like on a first floor setting. So we're, we're doing a master bedroom suite on the first floor. Along with the other living space and the garage. So that takes up a, a lot of the space. And then there's just two bedrooms on a, on the half of a second floor. Um. What else, what else? I think that's about it. Again, it's just the size of the lot because it's a non-conforming R three. That, you know, I'm losing, I lose about six thousand square feet. From that, you know, from the twenty thousand. And again, my, my setback lines are just narrower.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cornetek. Is there any question? Are there any questions for Mr. Cornetek? Yes, Jane, go ahead.
I just, can, can you, are you, are reducing the non-conformity? Is that correct? In terms of the side setbacks?
Uh, well, no, it's, it's still going to be non-conforming each side because you have to be fifteen.
Right, but you're going from the existing is seven point three and you're proposing thirteen point two. So you're reducing the non-conformity, correct?
Yes, again, I'm keeping the same width of the building that's there. I'm just centering it on the property.
Okay. But it's a reduction of non-conformity. So that's a good thing. That's my point. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I have no other questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this? Application, uh, three oh one Palomar Drive, either in favor or against it? Okay, hearing no comments. I'm going to close the hearing on three oh one Palomar Drive. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cornetek.
Thank you.
Our next item is number seven, one zero six French Street, map two three eight, parcel seven three. Petition of William and Deborah Cavaci for a variance of the zoning regulations, section eleven point one five. To reduce the street line setback from fifteen feet, currently six point four feet, proposing four point five feet. And section eleven point one zero to increase lot coverage from twenty percent, currently thirty-nine point twelve percent. Proposing forty point one seven percent permission to construct a, a larger mechanical platform to add a generator premises BD zone. Uh. Is, Mr. Cavaci, are you presenting this?
Yes, I am.
Uh, go ahead, sir.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to present our. Request for the variance. Uh, we would like to widen and enlarge the existing FEMA compliant. Platform that we have for our air-conditioned compressor. So that it can, we can accommodate a, uh, a, a generator. Um, when building the house, the house, we completed building the house in the spring of, uh. Twenty, twenty twenty. And, uh, and, and constructing it, we prepared for the generator by wiring and installing a Generac. Uh, transfer switch and had the gas company, uh. Supply us with the required larger meter and piping for, to provide the natural gas for the generator. So we, we were anticipating. Um. We had gotten a variance for the air-conditioned platform. Um, and, and that, that is, um, approved. Um, we are. Hoping to. Pro, provide, uh, uh, to install a generator. Um, and this was highlighted to us with the, the storm Isaiya when we were without, uh, power for six days. And so that heightened our, uh, concern and, and, and desire to get this completed. Uh, but it was kind of set back because of COVID and the need to, uh, seek a variance. In the meantime, I've, uh. Worked with members of the zoning, uh, Mr. Decker has been very helpful, uh, in assisting me with this. And also, uh, members of the building department. We've had three or four, uh, generator, uh, installer contractors come. And look at the property and they all agree that this is the only option that is available to install a generator. Um, so, uh, we then, of course, attempted to proceed. And have our architect draw out the plans. The, the, the existing, uh, air-conditioned, uh, platform will be widened by less than two feet. Uh, as you note on the, on the description there, on the agenda. Um, and, uh. And.
That's it.
Yeah, that's, that, that, that's pretty, pretty much it. I think, uh, we've, uh, covered that. I'm just looking at my notes to see if I have omitted anything. Uh, and, uh, otherwise. I welcome any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, sir. As a board.
Man, if I'm just, uh, uh, I did forget something. Uh, I've gone to all our neighbors. And as you notice, uh, they've all signed on, uh, with the no, uh, objection to it. Our, our lot's unique in that it is, uh, uh, three sides are, uh, of, of the property are on, on face streets. Uh, we, we face French Street on one side. We have Church Street on the other side. And then we have what's called Bowman's Way. Which is really an access for the people on French Street to be able to access the beach. Uh, originally, when we were seeking, uh, uh, variance. Um. You know, there was some question as to what the setback, what would be for, for that, uh, because. It, it's really not used as a street. The, 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 the street is never plowed. People park their cars there and so forth. So. Uh. So that's, that's all I, I need to share with you at this time. So I welcome questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. It's, uh, does the board have any questions for Mr. Cavaci? All right, no question. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or against this application, uh, one oh six French Street? Hearing no comments. Uh, we're going to close the hearing now on one oh six French Street. Thank you very much, Mr. Cavaci.
Thank you.
Our next item that we have. Number eight, uh, two sixteen Harvester Road. Map four nine, parcel two two, petition of Sound Vision Homes LLC. For a variance of the zoning regulations, section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback from forty feet. Currently twenty-nine point eight feet, proposing twenty-nine point seven feet to the house and twenty-nine feet to the front steps. And section five point two point five to increase lot coverage from fifteen percent, currently sixteen point two percent, proposing fifteen point seven percent. Permission to remove. Excuse me, dwelling to the foundation and construct new two and a half story, single-family dwelling premises, R three zone. And who is presenting, uh, this application?
Good afternoon. This is Ken Betza. I'm, uh, managing partner of Sound Vision Homes and the address, um, two sixteen Harvester Road. Uh. Thank you for allowing me this time. Uh, yes, I'm requesting, uh, two asks. One is to maintain the existing street setback. And two is the, uh, lot coverage. And it's a, uh, non-conforming lot. It's, uh, that way with majority of the houses on Harvester and the surrounding blocks. And what I'd like to do is, uh, minimize, reduce the lot coverage. Um. To, from sixteen point two, its current footprint to fifteen point seven.
All right.
I can tell you that, uh, supporting the ask is, uh. Majority of the homes on Harvester and surrounding are non-conforming. Uh, I've. Uh, I received support from many of the mi- uh, neighbors. I am, uh, building a, uh, stylish colonial, um. Versus a slab ranch, so have a positive impact in the neighborhood. Uh, it's an actual reduction of the current lot coverage. Uh, hardships apply to the non-conforming lot, but there were other elements that brought us to. The proposed building and one was the building, um. Itself had deferred maintenance. Uh, I had an oil tank which I removed and remediated. Uh, had severe termite, uh, damage, so I could not, uh, renovate the house as is. And to have less impact, I was going to use the existing slab.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Betza. Uh, does the board have any questions for Mr. Betza? Jane, yeah, it's going.
I always have questions.
No, not everyone, but.
You know, this is one of my first times that I've seen Jane raise her hand several times so far.
Um, you're asking for a, um, variance, um, for the front setback. Where you're required to have forty feet and you want to keep it at twenty-nine point eight feet. Um, what, what hardship are you claiming for that particular variance?
So it, I'm using the existing footprint as it is.
Why is that a hardship?
Well, becau- because it has a high water table. Uh, I, I didn't want to disrupt the, the existing slab, so I'm building on the existing footprint and just going straight up.
But there's, what's preventing you from replacing the foundation farther back?
Because unbeknownst to me, when I purchased the house, I didn't know that, uh, the area has a high water table. So there could be several things that just go wrong in the area. Uh, so if you exist, move the slab, the high water table, there's not much I can do then. You know, then I'm stuck with an empty lot.
Are you, is this a, um, um, a spec house? You're going to live here or is this to sell?
I, I plan on living there.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Betza? All right. Hearing no other questions. There was anyone that wishes to speak to this application? This is two sixteen Harvester Road. Uh, either in favor or against. All right. Hearing no comments. We're going to close the hearing on two sixteen Harvester Road. Thank you, Mr. Betza.
Thank you.
Our, our final item, which is number nine, one sixty Cedar Road, as I announced earlier, that's been continued to December. Uh, so what we're going to have is we're, does the board need to take a break or do we want to go? If anyone needs a break, raise your hand, please, on the board. Okay, hands are raised. The public hearing has, is now closed. We're going to go return to our executive, our working session. First matter that we have, uh, for business is number twelve on the continued docket. And that's six forty-five Fairfield Beach Road. Petition of Latina Beach Homes Beach Properties LLC for a variance. Attorney Rizio presented this. And remember, we heard from attorney Burton on behalf of the modest, uh, who live near that home. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, discussion?
Um, I'm gonna, I kind of wrote down a couple of notes. I want to verify something that I read in one of the letters. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you may be able to help me. That at the establishment, wow, sorry. Um, my one-year-old decided to weigh in and disagreed. Um, my, uh, in my reading, uh, relative to this. The establishment of the setbacks, I'm assuming when all of these properties were built or when the regulations were established, were that. The setbacks were established by the existing position of the home. And that's why there's such a varied distance from the shoreline.
Yes, that's why we have a, a whole different section on the beach. That's different than the regular, uh, section five. You're in, you're into section, uh, of the elevens.
Right, okay. I wanted, I just wanted to make sure that I read that, uh, read that all correctly. Um, I think as far as this application is concerned. The, the two porches are in consistency with the, with the surrounding neighborhood. I think FEMA plays a role here that may not have been consistent or may not have been, or certainly wasn't considered. Uh, in the seventies, given the cases that, uh, attorney Barton, uh, referenced. Um, making this FEMA compliant is a positive. Uh, I'm not really concerned with the width of the deck in terms of. What's that?
How's it making it FEMA compliant?
There, the decks is, from what I understood, the decks will be, the new decks will be FEMA compliant and they'll be removing. The non-FEMA compliant sections of what exist.
What is that? I maybe Matt, you can clarify because I was, I was confused when everyone was talking about removing it. I've, I've been to that property. There's, you know, I, there's a stone slab. Maybe there's a wood on the sand. There's no deck on the house. I was trying to understand that as well.
No deck on the house. There's a deck, uh, towards the, in, in the sand area.
Right, okay. And then there's like a concrete slab.
I think that's what they're calling the non-conforming patio.
Right, okay. All right, question.
So. No, I had, I had kind of the same question. So if that, you know, if that does bring it into FEMA compliance, I'm generally. I would lean towards approving it, um. Cause I, I don't, I think being FEMA compliant is a positive and I don't find significant. Fault with widening the deck. While improving the distance from the shoreline.
I speak.
Yeah, go ahead, Jane, of course.
Um, attorney Burton talked about a lot of examples of, um, um. Things that were not approved, but I think every example he gave was about a commercial property and had to do a structure. And I think it's apples to oranges because here we're talking about open porches, which are considered differently. In the zoning than they are than enclosed porches or, or, you know, rooms. So I, I, I think their arguments don't really hold water. Um, not to mention the, um, the person who's objecting, those three houses away, it sounds like a neighborhood fight.
Any other comments from the board?
Do we have more than, didn't we have more than one objection letter? I was trying to scroll through and find it. Is that the only one?
When it was coming up, there was a separate objection letter that, uh, was from when it was initially on and continued. Uh, originally, remember it was a three-tier deck. Um, this application is for a two-section deck. They wanted to go up, up on a extra level and, uh. But there was an original second letter. Yes, you're correct.
They're opposed to the three-level deck, but maybe not to the two-level deck. What are they going to do? They're going to have a third deck on top of?
Yeah.
And are we, are we comfortable that there's no, no view obstruction caused by the decks on the neighbors?
None, none. I mean, it's geometry, doesn't work. There's no, there's no, it doesn't block anything and it's an open porch. It's not even a room.
All right. Any other comments? All right, uh, we're going to go on the order that I have on my screen, so don't move. Uh, uh, the order is going to be Brian, Jane, Katie, Terry, and then I go last as chairman. Uh, Brian?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie? Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That application has been granted. Number ten on the con- on the continued docket is continued. Number eleven on the continued docket is continued.
No, they did a good job.
Number three on the continued docket, it's eight thirty Beach Road. Uh, Sophia Leonatic, Le- Le- Leonidi, uh, Le- Leonida, sorry. Uh, application, uh, and presented by attorney Fallon, uh, to legitimize the construction error. This is the property on the corner of, uh, Fairfield Beach Road and Beach Road. Uh, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Terry. Yeah, thank you. All right, uh, discussion?
I think it's a reasonable request. Uh, it's not a, uh, not an enormous error. Um, see, and, you know, not to be punitive and request the removal of the deck. I think that would be overreaching here.
I, I remember the application, uh, I remember a lot of the applications for properties now that have come far and have been on for a long time. Uh, so, um, yeah, I remember and, uh, you know, this is, this is reasonable. So any other comments? All right, uh, Brian?
Yep.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that, uh, application has been granted. Next item that we have is number five on the continued docket, eighty-eight Dwight Street. Attorney Fallon also presented this. It's for Victor Nessie. Um, and it's to, uh, construct a one-story second floor with attic addition, front and rear porches with stairs. Uh, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, discussion? Okay, remember, uh, this is, uh, moving to a FEMA compliant. Home, we have a coverage reduced. Uh, I'm looking at my notes here. Ninety-three hundred square foot required, has seventy-six hundred. The square is sixty-three when you need seventy-five, uh, which are the, the points raised by attorney Fallon as to a hardship. Um, and discussion?
I get fits.
Yep.
Agreed.
All right, let's bring it to vote, Brian?
Yep.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Application has been granted. Number nine on the continued docket has been continued. Um, and then on the general docket, number one, two sixty-seven South Pine Creek Road. Um, Karen Jaber, the owner, presented the application. It's to construct FEMA compliant, two-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling. She needs a couple of different, uh, variances. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Who said that, Brian, from a distance?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
She sharpened her pencil.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we went from thirty point, thirty-one point six down on, uh, lot coverage to thirty point four. Just point four over, uh, and, uh, from fifty-eight to fifty-four and a half. You know, even though it's a, it's fifty percent. Went from a thirty-two hundred square foot home to a three thousand square foot home. The squares required sixty. She has forty. It's a rectangular shaped lot. Uh, those, those numbers, even though they're over. Are completely legitimate for this lot, which has got three different types of hardship, if you want to look at it literally. Honor, uh, the width and the size.
But the, the four percent reduction in FAR is significant, so.
I, I know you like that, so as we do.
So we don't have, you know, Frankenhouses all over the place.
Good. All right, bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yep.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Uh, that application has been granted. I want to thank Ms. Jaber for, uh, working. To, to do that, to bring it as close to compliance as possible by making a nice FEMA compliant home as well. Uh, number two, sixty Chapel Hill Drive, uh, Diana Pond Klein. She presented her own application. It's to construct a second floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, thank you. All right, uh, discussion?
It's my favorite response. It's a reasonable request. It's an inline second, second-story addition.
Yes.
All right, let's bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yep.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That application has been granted. Number three, ninety-five Point of Vista Road. It's a petition for the Hardees. Uh, Mr. Susan presented the application to legitimize construction error. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. All right, discussion?
If, if this had come to us under normal circumstances. We would, I, I think we wouldn't have any issue. And I know we, it's not our job to punish, but. I mean, how, what happens if some stuff is built without permits and then they come back afterwards and say, oops, I'm sorry?
Well, what literally happens is they, they gotta bring it into compliance. You gotta chop a, chop a room off, chop a, an addition off.
Yeah.
Remove a structure.
Yeah.
How did they get a C O?
They didn't.
They couldn't have got a C O. That's why they're here.
If you don't pull a permit, you don't, you don't need a C O because there's no open permit.
Right. Yeah, you know, I really don't like. When they don't go through the permitting process and, you know. It's, I don't, I don't like this.
Right.
Coming to us, but your point, Jane, is well-taken. I mean, when you, when you look at. The properties in that area, you know, they're all, you know. Zoned at a certain, but they're, the, all the lots are undersized. This one by three thousand, little over three thousand square feet. Uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, we, we have a lot of properties on this, on this hearing, on this day. From that general area, uh, you know, that, you know, different, different zones. There's a zone over there and you have the R three zone over in, in, in that general area. And but a lot of them were set up and then the zoning came in and they made the, the, the change. So, you know. I, I, I don't want to, we don't set precedent, thank God, uh, with everything. But I, I agree with your, your thought that we probably would have, would have loved this and, and luckily it was, it, it appears to be done tastefully too, so. Uh, uh, it's, that, that's, that's, that's also another thing too that would, I, quite frankly, that would, uh. That would influence me, uh, if someone did this and wanted to legitimize. Uh, if anyone's listening, I know Matt's going to tell people that when they come in on certain things.
That's correct.
All right, let's bring it to a vote, Brian?
Yeah.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes, that's been, uh, uh, approved, granted. Number four, uh, eleven forty-three Saskahill Road. Attorney Rizio presented it for Saskahill Road Lot Two. Uh, and, uh, this is to allow those, uh, accessory structures to remain. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. All right, discussion?
I just wanted to know if they were going to remain mechanical buildings because I wouldn't mind moving on to the property where that is. Um, I really don't see any, um, I don't see any reason not to approve this. Um, he spoke to the abutting neighbor. They don't seem to have a concern. My, the reason I asked the question I did was because I wanted to make sure that they were, it was a stable building with mechanical equipment in it.
I think the neighbor minds because he has like an eight-car garage. It's right on the property line, so.
So I, I just have a question. Um, why this needs the board to give it a variance? Why can't, um, Mr. Decker just give it an administrative pass? Or is that just not how it works?
No, he, he doesn't have the ability to. They need a variance because now the lot lines have been redrawn, so it changes what's a front and back. He can't, he can't. Say it's a, it, it, it fits, nor would he want to. I think he'd want to rather have a board. Uh, go out because if someone has a problem, all they're going to do is file an appeal as to his decision.
That's correct.
Yeah, they, they have to get the entire subdivision approved off of approvals, like board approvals, I'm assuming.
They're in.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's the right way to come is to the Z B A to address this.
So what we're approving, it, it legitimizes a pre-existing, nonconforming
Structure.
Situation, correct?
With those, with those setbacks.
Yeah. Okay.
Because what they're not pre-existing, nonconforming until the lot lines are officially changed.
Right. Okay.
They want, it's, it's drawn on paper. We just rubber stamped it from our end.
Right. Okay.
So. All right, Brian? Yes?
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That's been granted. Number five, two forty-six Churchill. Attorney Rizio presented this as well. Ishan, Shansha Ishan, legitimized relocation of existing one car. What? With a one-car, one-story garage. Entertain a motion to approve Churchill?
Moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion?
It's a reasonable request.
I'm not, I, I, I live pretty close to this and my daughter's friends live around the corner, off some of those side streets and this was always been the garage to nowhere. Because it was tucked sideways. Uh, you know, this long stretch of grass. I'm like, why would they ever put the garage facing that way?
Right.
I feel like the contractor dropped it backwards. Like it was supposed to face the house so they could take a left into the garage.
So it was just, uh, so it's a good fix and he's moving it back a little bit, which is good. Creates a little bit more driveway as well. Brian?
Yep.
Jane?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. The number six, Faith, you're up. Katie, you're not. You're replacing her voting spot, Faith. On three oh one Palomar Drive. Petition of Cavelas and Mr. Cornetuck presented the application. It's to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Discussion?
It's a reasonable request and fits the neighborhood.
Yeah, a lot of those old homes on the slabs. And to your point, to your question, Jane, there is a very high water table in this area. I have water in my basement. I have water in my basement every time it rains.
We're talking about Palomar Drive, not Harvester.
Uh, oh, Harvester, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I think that's right. Sorry, but Harvester, yeah.
But this on Palomar, the, um, he's reducing the nonconformant, not conform, yeah, whatever, he's there's more space on the other side, so that's good.
Yeah, it's one of those small homes like over in Harvester, that's why I got confused. So Brian?
Yep.
Jane?
Yes.
Okay, not Kate, Faith?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. Number seven, one zero six Front Street. Petition of Cavaci, Mr. Cavaci presented this. Um, it's to allow a little bit larger mechanical platform so they can add a generator. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. All right, discussion?
I just had a quick question for Matt. Matt, that, what they're requesting creates a large enough space between the the A C unit and the generator?
Uh, that would fall under the jurisdiction of the building department and the manufacturer requirements. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that it has the five-foot clearance. Based on their drawing, I think they have six. Uh, so yes, that minimum requirement for intake from a generator is five feet.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought it was. Thank you.
It's to give them the generator.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a right of way on that side, so there's not even an immediate neighbor that it would bother.
All right, Brian? Yes. Jane?
Yes.
Katie? Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. And then next one, Harvester. Now we're on Harvester. Two sixteen Harvester, Sound Vision Homes. Mr. Betza presented the application for that LLC. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, discussion?
I have a problem with the not conforming to the front setback requirements and the fact that there's, there may or may not be a high water table there. That's an economic decision because you don't want to spend the money to, to build a new foundation and that's not a hardship. And the difference between twenty, you know, twenty-nine point eight and forty feet, that's, that's big. And if he's planning on a two-and-a-half-story house, it's gonna be just this wall very close to the street. It's not gonna fit into the neighborhood. It should be where it's supposed to be.
Is it, is it not on the line next, with the house next to it?
It, that's, doesn't ma, I, I don't, I don't know if it is. It doesn't matter. It still should be as conforming as possible. It's a deep lot. There's no, it's not like there's no room to push it back.
I mean, maybe I'm reading it wrong. Are we talking about, it's currently twenty-nine point eight. He just wants twenty-nine point seven, so we're talking about an inch, right?
It's supposed to be four.
Percent, sorry. No, an inch.
Yeah, from where it is now, but he also wants to take this little tiny house and go up two and a half stories.
Right, but he's only, but the cover is, the cover, I mean, again, I'm, I'm just make sure I'm reading this properly. Coverage is just going, okay, the coverage is actually going down. And it's over by point seven.
I'm not, I, I have no problem with coverage. I've, I have a problem with where the house will be located when he's done. Yeah, it's only gonna be an inch farther back from or forward from where it is, but it's going up two and a half stories. It's a brand-new house. There's no, there's nothing preventing him from building it where it should be, which is a forty-foot setback.
All right. I mean, it seems like the neighbors aren't upset about the height of the house.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a two-story that looks like it's built on the same line as the house that he wants to build, so it's, it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood. So I, I don't, I don't think it's.
But there's, I, I don't see there's a hardship. Why can't just put it where it's supposed to be? It's a very deep lot. And he's claiming it's because he wants to save money. And that's not a, that's not a reasonable hardship argument.
I think he's also talking about the, isn't he also talking about the water table also?
Water table, yeah.
Building a foundation there is a problematic, which is probably why it's a slab there anyway.
Well, then build a new slab farther back.
The hardship that he can have is that it's supposed to have twenty thousand square feet, only it's ten thousand square feet. And he's only going point seven percent over that by keeping a house in area. Most of the houses that are, have worked on, they maintain their front, their frontage. Uh, it's pretty consistent. And these are one of those, these those old military houses that were built on slabs in the fifties.
I just think it's a brand-new house. You can, you can make it as conforming as possible.
And he would be ten feet behind every other house on the street, the front.
So that's not a bad thing to have a deep front lawn. It would only be an improvement when you're going up that high.
All right, let's bring it to a vote. Brian?
Yep.
Jane?
No.
Katie?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I say yes. That one has been granted. Number nine, one sixty was continued. That closes the hearing. Again, congratulations, Faith and Brian, and we will see you in December. Brian and Faith, don't forget, there's gonna be a swearing in. You'll see me there. I had to be sworn back in again as well, so.
Somebody just has to tell me where and when.
Uh, something should come out from, uh, from the town clerk's office or from the, the rep from either from, from the D T C. Um, or from us will be from the R T C for Faith and myself.
Sure.
All right. Have a good, uh,
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving and we'll see you in December. Thanks, everyone.
I just got so excited, Matt. Thank you for reminding me.
Take care.
Bye-bye.